All right, we can go through the screen. All right, we'll follow the order for here.
Oh. I know.
All right.
I didn't turn the recording. This one. All right, I'm sorry.
What are you working on?
Can you hear this at this moment?
Yes.
On the regular meetings?
Yes. The regular meetings on the second page. First thing on the agenda would be.
Regular meeting, both of the board.
The first. First order of business. Then, the second page.
And.
I'm so curious why this. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Usually words. Once it's over, you can hear the first voice coming down there as well as he can.
Yeah, we did that last time.
And they used it in another word.
All right, follow the order.
All IP.
Welcome to meeting is, uh, by technical difficulty. Follow the order. And we have a. Right, and on the agenda, we have public hearing.
It was Liam Payne, not worried.
Okay, so, public hearing, uh, under the agenda. Notice is hereby given, per on water control conditions, it's water supervision, the whole of public hearing ends with state March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, seven PM in town hall room one twenty. How about forty, Pinkerton Road. For only today, get to consider following amendment for adoption, and it's A to part one, sixty one. Section A one, water rate schedule for one hundred cubic feet, water rate. Uh, existing rate being four dollars, eight cents, new rate being four dollars, fifty seven cents. Irrigation rate, existing rate being four fifteen, new rate being four fifty seven.
Whoa.
Fifteen. Irrigation. Four fifteen. And four fifty seven, water surcharge bodily. Water rate surcharge bodily zero to ten dollars. Then it's A, part two, second two. Section A one, sewer usage chart for one hundred cubic feet, sewer rate of existing rate five dollars and ninety two cents, new rate. Of six thousand fifty two cents, flat rate sewer bodily one, existing rate one seventeen fifty seven cents. New rate being one twenty nine. Thirty thirty three, sewer surcharge bodily of twenty dollars and rate still being twenty dollars. And that's it for the agenda for the public hearing, so, public hearing is open. In attendance tonight, we have Bishop, very very, not last, or Italy. Bishop.
The whole first thought.
Yeah, I gotta take higher six. All right, so, public hearing is open and I, we have public for testimony.
Because I'm the public tonight.
Sounds like it's an idea.
Again, first time to a, uh, to this board meeting.
Would you, could you identify yourself?
My name is Mark, Mississippi.
And you're.
It's one oh five Madison Drive in Berlin.
Thank you.
I came here just out of interest. My background is, is a environmental engineer. And, um, I recently moved back into town. I was born and raised here. Willard School, Berlin High School. UConn. Killingworth. Middletown. Back to Berlin. I've only been back in. Berlin for about a year. I'm retired. I saw this notice, I said. Go see what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. My questions. Why are you raising rates? You know, it says, um, oh, well, we got payoffs of loans and blah, blah, blah. Why you guys paying up, you know? Why are we raising rates? Not the rates are outrageous. I, I agree, my, my water bill is, you know, flush the toilet, do laundry. Water is made of. I don't think farm, I don't water grass, writing my graph. So I have a very, very small water bill. But, and the big content of everybody. Rates are going up. You guys. Why, why are you doing this? What, what are you paying for that needs a rating? Whether it's ten, twenty, thirty dollars here, it needs nothing.
Let me respond back to that.
Sure, go ahead. I'm, I'm not here to be adversarial.
No, that's fine, and I appreciate that, as an environmental.
I, I, I've got my, my, my clan here. Helping me out.
Respond back to that, of the last rate we did increase, we had twenty nineteen.
Yes, I see, I saw that.
Tried to reduce that, basically, as you know, many utilities go to an annual rate increase. And we've tried to keep our, our rate, it's down to a minimum. Now, we stick during the COVID, because it is, uh, all considering, the number of individuals has a problem. Daily. Red point though, you have to raise rates, because we're taking into our return earnings. And because projects that we have need to be done on an ongoing basis.
Is that we don't have more people buying water?
So we have more people buying water, uh, we just have more infrastructure that needs repairing.
Examples.
And I can give you one, actually, I have a copy here, getting into our, uh, business, but you're welcome to take a look at it.
Sure.
We have a list of projects that we're playing.
Oh, that new road pump station, I know that well. I used to work in a place called Circuit Z.
Okay.
And we used to just burn that thing out.
Okay, so you can appreciate that, that's never been done since nineteen sixty eight, sixty seven.
Oh, yeah. We just throw in some sewers.
And, well, I've got the right person then. Anyway, the point of it is that it's in the flood zone, it's in, but it's not operational. Our, our sellers were going down there three times, actually, about eight or nine times a month to, uh, I've clocked this homes. The pumps, uh, they need to fail, so, where, where are we doing that?
Okay.
And so, uh, that's one project, we just finished the project, if you're reporting, and on the rolling, like, we replaced the concrete pipe that was, uh, nobody wanted to repair. Okay, and we were afraid of bursting, and we actually replaced it with a sixteen inch duct, though I have a fight. So, yeah, so we've got other projects, the projects, I was down below, the, the ones that we need to take advantage of. We have a storage tank at limitation, limitation mountain, over the southern end, uh, it's never been corrosion proof internally, though it needs to be corrosion.
So it doesn't have cathodic protection or anything like that?
Yes, cathodic protection, but cathodic protection hasn't, uh, it's probably, uh, reduced the corrosion internally. The exterior tank was painted in twenty sixteen, interior, interior tank is never painted at all.
Exterior, inter, i- is it underground or above?
No, it's above ground, it's, it's fifty five foot tank, okay, uh, it's above ground, basically. Um, and it, uh, we found out externally when we were painting it, that we can't live without it, because when we tried to draw it down, actually, say Silver Ridge and, uh, Westview Terrace, uh, the Westview Highlands put out of service, because they both had booster pumps, they couldn't get water to that location.
Okay.
So, we, you know, uh, if you want, uh, not to, you know, with, with practice any longer, but you're welcome to come in and talk to me at any time, I can give you a whole list of activities that are ongoing, uh, that aren't necessarily covered, yeah, that we're still have done and been, uh, now, continue to do. But that, that kind of gets your question, but as a, as a matter of fact, most utilities, so, if we get it, basically, within eighteen months to right here, always looking for something to run with this.
I'm, I'm sure, yeah. It's all my electric bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Or my gas.
So it ours. I hope that answers.
It does, it does, I just, I was just curious. But the funding has to come from the town and not from state?
Well, we're, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with the term enterprise system. We are an enterprise system, and although we're functionally part of the department of, 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 of the town, we still function on our own, on our own water collection fees, water and sewer collection fees, and that's the, that's the way we, that's basically function of Cisco. Now, being interconnected with the town, obviously, there's certain things they take advantage of, like, for instance, HR people, and some of the finance people, and so forth. But we do pay for some individuals, like the town, uh, public works, or, or the system, public works, or, and also, uh, Jim Horrible. It is, uh, Lisa, a portion of, uh, the industry salary is paid by, by us. Uh, but typically, we're, we're independent, like, very much like, you're very, something that, um, the town's around it, so, similar situation.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing it.
Oh, no, no, no. She did, was trying to get executed that way.
You know, but listen, if you're the new guy in town, or the old guy, new guy in town.
Well, if I have responded detailed enough, as I said, stop by.
That's fine, no, 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 no. If I can copy that. Oh, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
One question. Chairman, if I could just offer a comment to Mr. Mirzieski. I think I remember you growing up many years ago in, in Madison Drive in that area, but just a point of interest, your water and sewer utilities are actually provided by the Worthington Fire District? Which is not a part of the board that, that you're sitting in front of this evening.
Oh, I didn't know that, thank you. You're in the wrong system, I'm in the wrong, I'm in the wrong.
But maybe, maybe you can be helpful, because what we're looking at is trying to consolidate, you even have a different condition, because you have what they call a mill rate associated with your bill. So they, they charge you a mill rate based on your home.
I thought I got a bill rate from Worthington Fire District, on Berlin Turnpike.
Yes, but what happens now is that every July.
I thought it was on YouTube, no, no.
No, they send you a separate bill, and that bill is for, is for water and sewer, but, but it's a tax on the district.
Based on your property.
So you're getting, you're getting an earful today, you're getting an earful in terms of your supply. We got a chance, definitely.
I'm in the wrong room.
I need to see Ray and get an even bigger description from him.
Yeah. Yes, yes, I do that.
Thanks, Jim, I didn't know that.
You'd have been a good recruit.
Well, he still is.
Still is.
Well, I mean, you know.
Technically, yes, is a resident of the town, he has a right.
He has a right to bill in any commission. Well, you know why, because we supply, just, we supply, we're, uh, we're, uh, Worthington Fire District, everything, water and sewer. So basically, they use our, uh, infrastructure for sewer facilities, and they use all our water from Florida.
Where do we get our water from?
Well, we, we purchase water from your river. And, and we also have a well field over on Nelson Road, it has two, two large human wells that will be downed per day.
Okay.
And we have a connection with NBC, we have a connection with Bravo, and we're working on a connection with there.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we, uh, you watch. I'd be happy to sit down with you sometime, if you want to.
Sure, even though I'm not in the, not, not in the right, right room.
Yeah, but I think you could be very useful to us. Yes, yeah. Any, any more input? We don't hear any more input, uh, there than hearing votes.
Does he have a motion? Jim, Jim Horrible. Oh. That would work.
I know. Motion to close by the second, second, second by time.
I mean, by his desk, by that.
All those in favor, I, after my mistake, all right, public hearing is closed. And then we go to the agenda to open up regular. Get executive, uh, so we got a time on that?
About seven nineteen.
Seven nineteen. And so, bottom order, probable minutes. There's two sets of minutes here, January twenty fourth and March sixth, March sixth, if you remember what, so, let those.
Would you be January twenty fourth, first?
And the earlier ones.
So, pay to pay.
Most commissioner Fairwood.
Second, I'll say, second. All those in favor, I, or I, after my mistake.
I can hardly hear you, Mr. Chairman.
Turn the volume up. Better technology, on the nineteen. All right, so that's at twenty four. Next section, special meeting, on the market.
In a motion.
He's moving it.
I beg a motion except for, part six, special meeting, that's.
Second.
I said seconded.
It was.
Actually, we, but I had that in spread. That I would say it was. Was on a lot.
Qualified, I was qualified. All those in favor, I, after my mistake. All right. Yes. That's that, now. You can go on, very important, six, your business, public hearing action rate increase. Uh, any conversation, questions, or whatever we get, our input, I'm gonna go in here. For informational purposes, more than anything else, so, um, anybody else has need to discuss.
Yeah, I, I wanna rehash a couple of things. When we voted, uh, mid two thousand nineteen, I said that we raised the rate by thirty three percent. And Ray questioned me, I went back in our records, we did it. We raised it thirty three percent.
It was at the break, they did.
It had not been, and so, we're coming to the situation today. And everything is looking like we want to raise it ten percent, so, I went and looked at what. By the way, have we got a contract with Worthington yet? You know, for supplying the water?
Sixty one for the.
There's an existent, well, right now, they charge, uh, four fifteen for water and four fifteen for sewer. Plus the mill rate. Plus the mill rate, what I'm getting now. If we're gonna go with this, uh, R S B. Try and, to get the whole, uh, vote of these people, we dumped rates out there into the public. And how are you gonna capture the public's eye, saying, well, Kansas City is cheaper, Worthington is cheaper? And here comes thorough ends, raising the rates over ten percent.
Their rates are gonna go up too.
Are they?
Just, we, because we provide the water to, that's what builders get it.
This is four twenty five.
Four twenty five.
It is both water and sewer. The only reason they can keep it this low is because of the building, the building went up one point eight. At least we did one six three.
So, so why do they? Why do they drag their feet paying their sewer?
You answer that for me, and we will have a.
I don't ask in means, believe all, the Berlin people. They're paying the bill for them, while they drag their feet, this is the same old issue, sorry, Jim Horrible, I'm on my, I'm on my horse.
Uh, well, I, 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 I don't deny it, but the point of it is that I can't, you know this, because you said here, legally, we're limited as to what we can build. My point is, is that, um, and we've talked about this over and over again, is, um, yeah, we should either do one of two things. Basically, set up a situation where we go to mediation, I would rather lose the mediation if I'm doing it wrong. And then, secondly, if that doesn't work, go to court, after four years, been talking about four years, I thought, what's the difference between four years, we can see each other in court, I'd rather, at that time, I'd be a bit ready.
Hey, I agree with you, I'm still looking out for the citizens in the Berlin water.
I, I.
Do everybody, that's where I am.
I'm a Worthington Fire District system person, and I don't like it personally.
Let me, let me fly one of them. We just finished putting a new duct to the pipe in, right?
Yes.
And the original bill was one point one bill, and we got a grant of two fifty.
We did two hundred fifty thousand dollars, right?
And you told me that Worthington and Kensington.
Kensington is not, doesn't get water.
Okay.
Worthington does, and Worthington, and this is interesting, because I know where you're going with this, because Worthington is their last meeting, where, last meeting, when Attorney Sullivan indicated that they would, on a per customer basis, what our, our, our surcharge was.
Potential, okay.
So they said, so, in other words, twelve hundred customers they have, and they'd be paying ten dollars for that, for any.
Really?
Yes, that's what they indicated.
Well, yeah.
I haven't commented it yet, and I haven't set out the bill yet, but that's what they had indicated in that meeting.
Well, the I N I, it said that Kensington was paying that bill.
Well, Kensington and I N I is, is a little bit more complicated, because, um, we found out, uh, it's a technical matter, that the backs around the meter mess, uh, a mess, because, uh, the three entities, when they inherited to calibrate it, and all three entities didn't realize that they were dealing with an insert, we had, we actually had to go to a consultant engineer who identified that this insert, the common hole, was, was because when you do that, you have to move the pipe back to get in the backer, which means that we gotta go back in there, ship out another foot for the, before the insert, in order to get an actual rate. Now, we did get some ratings on a, on a, on a temporary meter that they put in place, that shows that the I N I is still sensitive. But we can't actually build it for it until we get it with metering system, but that's part of the problem. And notice, like, them throwing stones at us, and this one just happens again, because it's a weakness. And I, I never knew that this would be, because I had three entities sell us that were calibrated properly, and all people, people didn't know.
It's if they can get in the meter.
We needed an expert, eventually.
Realized it's flooding the meter so much that they can't even get down.
Yeah.
So the other one.
Paying the surcharge ten dollars for it.
Yeah.
I got twenty six thou, twenty six hundred thousand thrown in water, roughly, like, twenty six hundred. So forty bucks by the twenty six. Comes out to about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And over twenty years, it's two million dollars.
For this two percent, it's a shortage, so well. It's a one point six billion dollar project, it's not one.
The duct to play?
Yeah.
It was one, you said it was one point one million?
Oh, no, it's one point six, it was seven billion dollars.
With the.
The material itself, the pipe itself, which was four hundred thousand dollars, without the work. I'm not pocketing it, so I mean, I'm telling you where it is.
To the savings.
And the, and the consultant engineer, it cost us a hundred and sixty thousand.
But that whole package was one point one mil.
No.
That's the numbers you've been giving us for months.
No.
No.
It was over two billion, and it.
It was over two, and was brought down after you found a low bidder.
No, it was one point six million, but whatever the low bidder was, that was the lowest bid. I can give you the documents, and you can look at them.
Yeah, I'm sure, like, see how we charge them and, and how they pay us, some of the stuff we do. Okay.
Who are you referring?
Well, Worthington.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm still waiting money for.
Well, there's, there's another issue, but I don't wanna bring that up.
Okay. I'll bring that up, that. Two points I would like to make. First of all, I don't know if anybody in this board is looking out for the, the town of Berlin personnel, all right? The customers come for us. But we have to project and come up with potential problems, and we're in a position where we can't make a mistake, because we're health and safety. And everybody depends on us, and if we don't figure out the curves that are coming down the road, and we, we don't make any money on it. So, uh, it isn't like Ray is pocketing the money.
I know that.
But, but you, you question sometimes of, uh, you know, because we raised the rates. You talk about raise rates, I get a three thousand dollar bill for my industrial park, and my water bill isn't fifty dollars a month, and I got about a dozen toilets in the place. Not even. So, I don't know what purpose that these other people, uh, you know, in the other districts, all they do is, is cost plus, because we provide the water and sewer for them. Now, the pipes are getting bad now, I've been, that's the reason why I'm a commissioner, looks like we found potentially a, very seriously. And it's gonna be rectified, but we hadn't spent the money to, to camera, they promised me they were gonna camera that four years ago. Going to their meetings. Okay, so, if we don't do it, we hit the hit, I'm paying for it, but we're the responsible person here, and we're trying to head off a lot of problems, and there's a lot of problems coming down the pipe, that, that I foresee, I'm sure Ray sees it.
Well, let's look at it the other way, Tom, and you're looking at it and saying, let's not do anything until we get something reimbursed for both of the districts.
Well, we're trying to rebuild the reserve.
If you do that, what do we do? Do we wait? How long do we get? For legal action and still wait four years, and still, I mean, nothing happens. I mean, my mind's eye, you still need to do business, we still have people we have to.
I agree.
Work.
I agree.
So I mean, there's no choice, I mean, I, these, these rates, other than the one you pointed out earlier, are, are, you know, fairly, fairly reasonable, I think, respectfully. A lot of utilities are all, you know, doing. You know, fairly fairly reasonable, I think, respectfully. A lot of utilities are all, you know, doing eight, ten, twelve, fifteen percent.
Second, I N I, we are like the second worst.
Yeah.
In the in the in the Madabasixes.
Yeah.
And but New Britain is dealing with theirs with a ninety million dollar upgrade. So there is gonna be put in a pretty good dent. And we gotta spend more money in cameras to start cameraing this stuff, finding out where our I N I is. Where last projection was over fifty thousand gallons in a quarter that we were losing water. A day. That's a lot of water.
Yeah, but you can't be pinpointing saying it's in the Berlin section versus Kensington.
Oh, no, I'm talking about camera the whole thing. You know, this has to because we're finding out the problems that they should be addressing. Like, I'm sure that this leak is in the Worthington district. But they promised me four years ago they were gonna camera that. Okay, so the problem here is is they don't care because they're a cost plus. When the problem hits and the line blows, they sent Ray the bill. How many times they sent us the bill on lower lane?
I know, I know. To me, that's what bugs the hell out of me because you're asking the citizens in the Berlin district.
To pay for everybody else's bill.
Pay everybody else's problem.
Well, that's why we're having a hearing and and.
It's not just the hearing. It's why we're doing the way we do business. We're kind of like the last one in line here, but.
Let's look at what we're telling you. A little bit of a positive. Uh, the Denning Road pump station, we thought we were gonna do a loan. We didn't know we had a partner until later. And now we have M D C as a partner. So seventy percent of a three billion dollar project is gonna be paid for by that.
Sixty.
I mean, that could have all been paid for by us. And our rates wouldn't have been, they would have been doubled or tripled here. They wouldn't have been the same as you thought in the past years. Well, I mean, we have to look at the positives of the area. That's why.
Everybody.
Okay. What do you got? Just a reminder, we know that Liam is a representative from. This board or from the town of Berlin to the Madabassus district, which is. Another entity that we have to report to.
Well, we're in, we they treat our sewage.
Yeah, they they they're gonna be fun, but to them, they treat it.
Middletown.
It's in Middletown.
Well, it's actually. Oh, physically, yeah.
But they are in rumors.
They're not, aren't they?
Yeah.
They're nervous because our I N I is exceeding in.
And that's why they put in the meters down there on Denning Road.
Okay.
Those meters are showing a lot of information already and it's already been two months.
Yeah.
Ray's got all the information. Yeah.
Okay, so. What's that? Uh. I don't want to limit it, but are there any other comments?
No, that's what I was just gonna say. Any other comments? I don't have. Um, Gary. Okay. And input from the public. So uh that will actually open up a possible um motion to cover. The rate increase that stated in testified bill.
The motion to.
In the next round of the fourth motion.
Making the motion. For the public uh hearing action.
Pulled by Liam, second.
First.
Gary. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is this on the rates?
Yeah.
You know.
Okay. Yeah, it would be kind of no.
What is the commissioner here?
Okay.
So it carries.
So it carries. Alright, so that goes there. Alright, next one on the agenda is town council R F P discussion in regards to. Talking about.
Yeah, this this, I appreciate Tom and and Ruth and Liam showing up at the town council meeting the other week. Uh. The attorney suggested that we sit down with the consultant engineer. The consultant engineers are really more of the. Of purchased the minority engineer. And sit down with them to see before there's any kind of discussion on funding on the town basis or even the even our basis of partial funding. Uh, would be to discuss specifically what data could be collected because it makes no sense. If we can't collect any data uh from either of the two districts, I mean, that would be a waste of money for wear and out. So um we talked to Orochia the other day. Orochia, they. Um. Proposal to meet with the consultant sometime next week or so, and sit down with them to actually see what data can be collected. And we include Mike O'Hearn, Jim Horrible, myself, Orochia, and Attorney DiNofrio. And uh they should be Jim Erickson representing um Haley Ward. I don't know if there'll be anybody else in Haley Ward, but at least you're there.
And that's a blue and F O Y.
Well, the F O Y, uh, there's there's a little bit of an issue with it because. It depends on where you're gonna go for a lot. Typically, anything, if you F O Y the Department of Public Health. With the water supply plan, they would give you a redacted. And I can't even, just today, I got a form too from M D C. Would said that their water supply plan was submitted and they were providing with a redacted form that would have been reported, not a full report. So this is the question is, can we get a full report? Because if you get a redacted report, that's the way to the bank.
Yeah.
So we'll have to see, but we'll have to piece it together. And if not, I I'm out of options as to what else to do other than to. Look at maybe some legal consideration with the. Um, with the general assembly trial, we'll get some kind of mechanism there.
What is the, in this R F P, is the problem. That we will not be able to scope all the other districts?
We will not be able to collect all the information because at this point in time, they've indicated, when their attorney did not feel basically said that these are the two attorneys. Attorney Pentor and Attorney Sullivan indicated that they were gonna participate in any fashion.
Even though, let's say that we paid for it, but we would share that information with them. Would that be an incentive for them?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Well, this is just, this is just obstruction. This is all.
Well, that's my whole point is that it 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 does make sense to to allocate funds, particularly what is three-figure funds of a hundred twenty two thousand dollars. When you can't collect the data. We know what we stand, but we don't have any idea what they stand. But the town needs to know because if they ever fail.
Can the town?
You're gonna get it worse later on.
No.
I'm sorry, say that.
There the town, there's no entity that can force them, even though some of these people are under the state D E P problems.
No.
There's nothing's.
What?
And that's what I'm saying.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, this is where.
They gotta keep paying the bill.
Yeah, well, we keep paying the bill. Okay.
Well, you know, it's a dilemma. I really don't know what else to talk about.
So you'd have to sue for to uh to straighten out their problems? Or, you know, this two million dollars a year. Well, we did identify one that we gotta.
Well, you'd have to continue to turn, you can actually decide what we want to do eventually because if the consultant says that. It's you can't collect the information, uh, then the issue then becomes what do we do with it? Do we forget about it?
Well, I think we make it public. I think people would.
Well, I I agree. Maybe some public activity might help or move the move the ball.
But by having all the commissioners up there and letting the public ask the questions. That's going to open up a can of worms because I got a few that will open up here.
Well, there may be a couple of gentlemen that can show up and argue. One of the things makes more sense to consolidate.
Well, I was thinking more of a public. Public door that 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 would hold a couple hundred people that would understand what's going on.
Well, this is my point. Uh, I I mean, that that discussion hasn't occurred as yet.
Wow, I didn't realize they were so hard done and and they were not going to.
Well, Attorney Sullivan had indicated at one of the meetings, were there at the meeting, and then he indicated that it was a good idea. Actually, he raised it at. And then the next time around, he just basically fulfilled it. So a lot of them, you know, was the overpart. So I don't know. We'll see how it goes with the.
Did you want anybody, any of us participating?
I'll 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 ask Attorney Attorney DiNofrio or Orochia to probably do that in a second. I think it's gotta be limited somewhat.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
At a best.
Three point three, the Madabassus district invoice just came in the other day. Uh. It's two point, what's two point three nine five, grow up two point four billion dollars. So went up almost another hundred thirty thousand dollars from last year. And that's another reason there was a shortfall last year to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that so that uh I have the figures. I'm still waiting. Worthington can provide me with their figures for total consumption for the year. I have Kensington's and I have ours, but I won't have theirs. So I have to wait for that to be finished before I start getting up.
Does that include the grease because of Middletown in the term?
Well, Middletown, there there's a so-called uh, I'm not the term's not correct, a reimbursement. Because no, you know, when they, but it's it's on a sliding scale. So every year you get less and less of Middletown. From their original buyer.
The original buyer in was two million, I mean, two, two for each of the other districts. For which we see nothing except this reduced schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not, they actually, they're desperate. They're not paying us. Quit broke. What they're doing is reducing our.
We're sharing all their I N. Let me guess. Be very frank with it. So so that's coming up and I'll be working up a lot of figures for that because I have no chair. And uh, three point four, obviously the Berlin of the work, well, the budget, this was kind of a little bit of a fiasco going through real quickly. Uh, the finance officer thought that we could get out of having a public hearing on the budget with the town. But when we looked into it, our charter uh basically says that we have to be included in the way that the town handlers handles it. So right now, currently, the the budget is being evaluated for. Water of education, the general government, and also our our budget. So I don't know whether there are any questions on. And I would like to add uh the item three point five P five something.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna bring that up.
Just to give you a real quick one because it's been something.
Well, let's vote it on the agenda first.
Yes.
Put in any motions of add P five discussion on agenda.
I'm sorry.
First, when Liam said my very own's a favorite, I I can't remember his name.
Okay, uh, just recently, this came out actually um.
Just made the news yesterday again.
Well, it it is gonna be making a lot of news because it's a sixty day comment period at the E P A. E P A uh did something interesting here because their original proposal was seventy parts per trillion. Now, all of a sudden, they come back and the post standards are down to four.
Whoa. Seventy. No, no, they're they're gonna be, uh, M D C is talking about about trillion.
Yes, this is four parts per trillion.
Yeah.
This is the detection level. So it's fun, interesting. Here's where the rub is gonna come up. Uh, the Connecticut action level are sixteen, ten, twelve, and forty nine. So. They're gonna come down with four. They can't be less stringent. So that number has a generally gonna be going down. There's also another provision here, sort of an interesting one. It's not for you guys, but for more for me, is actually what they call a health. Um. Health advisory index. And it's generated by figuring out what the contaminant is, what the standard is. Taking that and adding it to adding it up individually and seeing if it comes out to less than a particular number. Supposedly one, it comes down to less than one. You don't have a problem. If you have over one, you have a problem. And so there's four other components in there with standards. Uh, so so it's gonna be a little bit complicated. Uh, this all goes in, as I mentioned, a sixty day comment period. And after that, uh, more likely than not, it will be adopted. This kind of makes everything a little bit odd because most states have already set standards.
As a previous.
Similar to ours, they're all they're all gonna have to reduce it down to four.
The comment period is in front of Department of Health or?
No, E P A.
E P A.
So I understand that now that we're gonna have to do the testing for them.
Well, that's part of the other proposal is is you're gonna have to do uh testing within the three-year period. But we also have, uh, I think I mentioned to you, we're gonna be, we're gonna have some tests on my E P A through the unregulated contaminated um body of regulation requirement. Uh. Hopefully, I think they're gonna be doing it quarterly for us. So we'll have that done. If not, we'll end up doing it ourselves anyway. There's only one Latin Connecticut that does it right now. One in Massachusetts.
One in Connecticut.
As we can get. You know, M D C to do ours, they're.
And she doesn't do it.
They will be.
They do.
They just approve.
Oh, yeah, it's a regional order. So that's that. And then what? The I N, so I that's three point six hundred flushing. This is where your information.
What was it? I'm sorry.
A high-end flushing.
Okay.
Entertained motion.
Three point six.
Three point six.
I make a motion, three point six hydro flushing.
Second, second.
This is.
All those are favor, aye, but.
There's more information because you're gonna see it in the Berlin citizen anyway, but I might get the heads up. Uh, we flush usually once a year, uh, and the next period of flushing will be called for their period one twenty eight. So wow, that's that's coming out. And there would be question during with that. So just to let everybody know. Typically, uh, we'll do it for that one month if necessary, we can extend it a couple of weeks.
We're not doing it during a very hot period.
Uh, that's why we're doing it in April. Dragging on. Uh, old business, uh, M D C, uh, the memo of understanding is finally been signed in Bruce had signed it on. In Patrick's state officially. So that makes it uh active that particular day. Um, we're gonna be looking at a meeting with the construction engineer and the consultant. Some five hundred people, well, um, so Nickerson is the contractor, but they're gonna be doing the project, you know, work for for us. And um we're basically funding the project. And M D C is paying things for my senior things for that project. Um, and as I mentioned before, it's a seventy thirty ratio for the page, seventy percent. Very, very hot. Um. Water main project, as mentioned, still in here before, that project is completed. It's just about ninety percent done. The only thing that's still outstanding is some paving that needs to be done and some minimal landscaping work over by M D C. Otherwise, uh, I think very well all set at this point in time. So we're utilizing sixteen inch water main, twenty inch water main, basically. Uh, is abandoned in place, so we're just leaving very, very.
What's the final number?
Uh, I I still, that's still to come out. We just submitted a payment schedule now and then the last one of the coming up. First of nature, so maybe first, second, third, so. I'll be getting them.
Is it all connected to the previous people, customer base? Do we have anybody else needs to connect with right now?
No, 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 we we left uh, we left connections for the Dario property, which is that subdivision here. Uh, with the two hundred units right by our pump station. It's got supposedly a hotel, two hundred living units. Uh, basically a condo and then uh some kind of a bank or some kind of way, you know, medical building. And a gas station. So all of this, but he hasn't gotten trouble because G O T, instead of doing it in phases. It indicated that they want to do it all one fell swoop. It's created a little bit of a problem.
Put a delay on it because I thought the gas station was gonna be done by now.
Well, he was hoping to have that done and ready to go and technically right now.
That way it could leak into the Madabassus.
Yeah, right now he's uh, he's hooked up the sewer. So anyway, uh, so so that's all set to go. The water from the private system and the last item that just submitted a. Comment. The Mary Bean project uh is on the Department of Public Health uh intended use plan. Um, I was trying to get some additional points. I've made some additional suggestions in the comments. So. We were given twenty five points with schisms on the list, but I was hoping to get a little bit more because it's an interconnection with married and. And that helps us out in a couple different ways. What it re fortified our southern system, which basically very weak. We've only got an eight-inch line. This would uh, this would draw our twelve-inch line to married, which then they could provide us with as much as a million gallons. And then would allow us to take at least a tank out of service without having any type of implication for for all the problems that are crushing. So that would be one positive thing. And in the long term, if we develop some additional supplies, Meredith has indicated that they would like to purchase. They would have to purchase for it. That would work out two ways uh either way. So that was just submitted. The public hearing ends tomorrow. So after that, we'll let you know where we stand. Also included in this, uh, well, I'm not gonna take any action with, is they gave me, I believe they gave me more points. For the Kensington Road expansion, gave me thirty points basically, which that project is also one that was truly funded. For the Kensington Road expansion, gave me thirty points basically, which that project is also one that was truly funded in the future. So right now, as you know. Okay, but.
Anything else? For the general good?
Has New Britain raised their weight rates to us?
No, actually, they're they're.
Well, that's more of a contract thing.
Yeah, it is, and it's also, uh you were able to negotiate the adoption with that because uh what what they was doing with Bruce Killman is that uh we had a four hundred thousand gallon minimum. So particularly from December on to maybe February, March, we would never hit that. And so we were killing this for four hundred thousand dollars, whether to use it or not, and then that's a minimum, Davis. So so we would end up paying eight, nine, ten thousand dollars with a month extra. Now we don't pay for that because we finally got three fifty thousand gallons today.
Don't have a minimum.
Pretty good. Okay.
Anything else?
One last thing, remember Connecticut water? Told you about the thirty one million gallons that that they had seen went from the irrigation system.
Yeah.
Anything happen to that?
No, actually, uh that's the that's a side by side positive that I can mention to you is that they give me numbers uh for water consumption total. And they also did me for irrigation work, it's something. So that difference is the difference that goes into the store, and that number is actually far less. So when we when we, when I go back to the Madabassus division of the building, uh we were actually doing much better because I can take out fourteen or fifteen million gallons uh per year, that that percentage is down about five or six percent, but we save money that way as well.
Any uh, just thinking in that direction, when we had a discussion with Mike, with Perdanowski in here, and anybody who is succeeding or whatever, the meters wouldn't let them in the house, or any event progressive?
No, we had uh that one into the true, it came around, we basically really focused the data and so far.
So far so good.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Okay, nothing else, well.
Make a motion to close.
Second, Eric, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Attorney, my name's name.
Aye, 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 aye.
Say hi to Jim before I hang up.
Hi, Jim. How good night? So how'd it go? Lot of school, uh.
Surprise, surprise.
Yeah. They're they're they're, you know, lot of each to a five point, whatever, eight point increase.
Really?
Yeah.
How much?
Five point eight four, it's never enough, or finance is recommending three percent, so.
I already knew that was coming.
We didn't come up with it, but. We're controlling. They actually showed your budget, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Did they show it, but did they?
It was enterprise fund, doesn't have any impact on tax taxes, so it's like, it was one slide, then it got in like a minute and a half, yeah. But he threw in some stuff about the Meredith connection to the capital project, so it was actually a nice chart, yeah.
Say hi to Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Jim.
How are you? It's been a long time.
Yeah. We're still around.
Yep.
But I just moved into town, so I, my dad didn't know anybody's here.